You don't want to plan?
She got three. Ah, my man.
No.
Mayor, we have a special guest tonight.
What's that?
Good evening. Like to call this evening City of Uniontown's Regular Council Meeting to Order December 7th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Roll call.
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Vasaki?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gurke?
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any comments on agenda items only? Yes, sir.
Mayor and Council, items number 278, 279. 278 is going to be to promote Corporal Jarrell Hanley to the position of Corporal, from Corporal to Sergeant effective on December 18th. Corporal Hanley has been with our department since 2018. You guys recently promoted him in the position of Corporal. He tested number one overall on the eligibility for Sergeant's list with the retirement of Sergeant Wayne Brown creating the positional opening. The position of Sergeant is budgeted in the next calendar year for us, and Hanley is well beyond suited to take that position. And our department, if your vote passes tonight, is excited to move him into that position if you allow so. Item number 279 is to promote Zachary Vernell from the position of Patrolman to the position of Corporal, also effective on December 18th. That position becomes open because if you promote Hanley, it creates a Corporal opening. That position is also budgeted in the next year for our department. Vernell has been with our department since 2020. I'm excited for this for him. He is our alternate detective right now, so he comes out and assists on all of our major homicide cases or major cases for callouts with our current detective. We as an administrative staff and department are extremely excited to have younger officers in our department grow and move forward into positions of leadership. I'm not going to be here forever, and we have to get the next generation ready to take this place over. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments on agenda items only? An executive session was held at 4:30 this evening for contracting personnel issues. Before I get into my little talk that I usually give, we have two councilmen who are actually having their last actual meeting. We have another meeting on the 18th of December, but this is the last official council meeting. And I'd just like to say a few words for Mr. Joe Shuhon, Mr. Steve Vasaki. First thing, thanks to both of you. Joe, it's been a pleasure to work with you. You've been here for eight years. Thank you for your service. You served some time with the Fire Department, which you did a magnificent job there. And I got to know you a little bit better when it's your time with Parks and Rec. And anytime I'd call upon Joe, he's always available, talking about Parks and Rec. And I don't think I got to say this at a previous meeting, but we had a Union Town Community Days. Them I called and put along, very gracious to have them do it. And I think we got a little bit fouled up with time, and we needed a pitcher for the city team. And Joe stepped up, pitched all, what was it, six, seven innings?
Yes, seven innings.
And he did a good job. He did a really good job. I was really impressed with his athletic prowess, but more impressed is what he gave to the city. That's the important thing. Joe, on behalf of the city, I'd like to present this plaque to you, just thanking you for all your service and everything you've done. Can't put into words what a pleasure it was. Thank you, sir.
I do have a speech prepared, but I'll do it at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Joe. Now we'll move on to Mr. Vasaki. Steve came on, I think, what, two months before in the previous administration, and then he served with me for four years. To say the least, Steve and I didn't get off on good foot, but we grew, our relationship grew. Excuse me. But I'd always call upon Steve. Whatever I wanted, it was, what do you want, mayor? I'll handle it. And there's a lot of things that go on in the city. I said, hey, I've got this problem. I have that problem. Steve always stepped up and did what he did for the city, not for me, but he did it for the city. Steve, thank you. I'd like to present you with this plaque. It's been an honor.
I was not prepared, Joe. But I'll just say, it was an honor to serve with everybody. Learned a lot. It's been an amazing journey. It's had its ups and downs, and it's nice that I can, I walked in as a councilman and walk it out with friends. So I really want to thank everybody involved. So thank you very much.
More ups and downs, Steve and Joe?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you very much for this.
Okay, on to a little speech and a little more pleasant things to talk about. Crystal Simmons Square, November 24th, was a huge success. Crystal Simmons, she really took it by the horns, put everything in motion. Lauren Yeoman, Nicole Heinbaum, and their team made a, everyone that spoke to me about the event that we had here at Christmas time was all positive. Had a great turnout. If you get a chance, stop by Story Square and see the decorations. They're, it's just fabulous. I walk through there two, three times a week, and I'm just in awe on how nice it looks. Makes us proud to live here. Thank you to all that were involved, Lauren, Nicole, Crystal, and everyone that was involved. Thank you so much for making our city shine. We're all proud about the city. Parks and Rec Board, had a lot of talk of people wanting to form a Parks and Rec Board. And I'm slow at times, but we got it all together with the thanks of people in the city saying, this is what we want to do. And we had our first meeting on November 27th. We appointed, they appointed Greg Radinsky as our president. He is here in attendance this evening. And Kelly Trot is our secretary. The other members are Jeremiah Farrell, Art Ruby, and Leroy Townsend, good people. They care about our city like everyone that sits at this table. They have great ideas, and I'll tell you what, they're really excited to get things started. When they said, how often do we meet? And I don't want to put too much pressure on anyone. And I said, we meet at will. And someone spoke up, or maybe all five of them spoke up at various times, said, we'd like to meet once a month. So we were saying, what day of the week do we want to meet? This is how dedicated these people are. We said Monday night. Someone said, I had something to do Monday night. We went down the week. We never addressed Friday night, because usually that's a good time for family and people go out. So I never addressed that. And I just spoke up. I said, I know you won't like this idea, but this is about the only solution that I have, is a Sunday night meeting. And they all said, that would be wonderful. So Parks and Rec are going to meet here at City Hall every Sunday night at 5:00 PM. And we try to keep our meeting to an hour. And that's Greg's job to keep that meeting to an hour. And I'm sure he'll do that. And on the subject of city boards, I may have not said this in the past, I mean, haven't said it every month, but we have a number of boards here in the city, and we'd like to get more people involved. That's how you make a difference in our community. So if you're interested in serving on a board, bring a letter of interest down to the city office, and we'll get you in a place where you can serve best in the city. We have many openings, and just get involved in the city, and you'll find out what a good time it is and how we can make our city better for everyone that lives here. Got a chance today to go to Grocery Outlet. I was invited along with our city council, and we had four of our five members. And Steve couldn't make it because sometimes people work in his job, but I knew Steve would have been there, because Steve never tells me no. Doesn't tell the city no. It shouldn't be me. Steve never tells the city no. And we had a really nice time. We got to meet the owners, and they seem really dedicated to the community. And please stop by. They're up at the Union Town Shopping Center. Support, just not that business. Support all of our city businesses. Again, that's what makes our city strong. We support our businesses in the city of Union Town. So good luck to the Grocery Outlet. And they were very cordial to us. I even made the statement that whenever I met the owner, I even said this in my talk. I said, actually, you should be the mayor of Union Town, because he approached me, I didn't approach him, so he'll fit in. And he really wants to be a part of the community. So again, please support them. On another positive note, I got a notice this week that the county had received a $1.3 million grant for the Sheepskin Trail that runs through the city. I can't say thank you enough to Gibson Thomas, to the commissioners, how dedicated they are to seeing our Sheepskin Trail become a reality. You know, we've worked, and I have to thank John Podolsky and his group for getting each, we had three sections of the trail, and we did that with city funds, and we showed that we're, you know, we're into, we have a stake in this game too. So thanks to everyone. And we're looking forward to the trail going through the city. And, you know, it's an economic boom and a social boom for the city. So support that. And people are using the trail. I'll walk into town now, like even at 1, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, I'd pass a number of people coming from Pennsylvania Avenue to Beeson Avenue. So that gets us into the city, and this $1.3 million will get us going there also. So we'll keep you updated as things come along. One thing that's very dear to my heart is code people. I get a number of calls along with everyone else that sits at this table, that this property is blighted, that property is blighted. We've been fortunate enough now that we have two code officers here working for us in the city of Union Town, and they just go full time, and they're very dedicated to what they're doing. Wayne Brown came on, hit the ground running, and he's very excited to be here. I went on a tour with Wayne, believe it was Tuesday, and we went, look at different calls that I had, different calls that other council members had, different calls that he had, and we go in and inspect these properties. And Wayne reported back to me twice since Tuesday. This is how I followed up. So we are, it's a slow process. Everything's slow. And in the private sector, I'm not used to working slow. I want it done. But we're going to get things done. We're going to make our city bright. We're going to make it shine. It takes time, but with your help, we'll get there. And thanks for all the cities, city employees, and city elected officials for making a difference. That's all I have. Thank you.
Comments on agenda items? Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to receive a report of their treasure for the month of November 2023, be in the same as hereby received and filed. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to accept the minutes of the November 2nd, 2023, regular council meeting and the November 6th, 2023, special council meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, Council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the city of Union Town. For November 2023 invoices in the General Funds, $73,849.39. Sewer Funds, $130,330.30. Recreation, $521.78. Highway, $14,102.17. Off Street, $11,525.79. Recycling, $1,668.52. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Mayor, this next resolution is for a bid for the fuels for city vehicles. We just received the one bid.
So we received one bid from Center Independent Energy LP. They're located out of Pittsburgh, PA. Unleaded gasoline, average OPIS cost plus $1.89 per gallon. Diesel will be the average of OPIS cost plus $1.89 per gallon. That is the only bid that we have.
That's 18 cents a gallon.
No, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. Good luck. How about that? Good luck.
That's what I did my whole life.
Good luck, man.
You don't think?
He's right. It's .189. It's almost 19 cents. But Mayor, you're right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
They like adding that .9 at the end of the cost.
Well, it's not, it's not 19 cents. It's still 18. Do we have any representatives from Center Independent? Right now currently, do you know what the OPIS average cost is by any chance, off the top of your head?
No.
Thanks.
It does look like a dollar. Average is reported in terms of cost today.
I remember last year, you really put a great presentation together. I had a lot of questions for you. So yeah, I feel comfortable with the bid. Of course, you always want more than one bid, but your location, the equipment that we have, it serves a great purpose for what we need as the city. A lot of the equipment they have in the Fire Department, we're not able to. There is a location in town, another location, but we're not able to get our big, larger piece of equipment into that small location. So, thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to accept the bids for fuel for all City of Union Town vehicles for 2024 from Center Independent, in the amount of unleaded OPIS plus .189 per gallon and diesel, the average OPIS plus .189 per gallon. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, that Fayette EMS be appointed to the City of Union Town to be the 911 ambulance provider for the City of Union Town from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024, at a monthly rent to the city of $500. Mr. Billy?
So recently, Fayette EMS has reached out to local officials in the county. I had some talks with them, and they expressed a shortfall in the budget that they're having and wanting, and they have shopped the idea with a lot of the municipalities in Fayette County, and they're looking for help. Fayette EMS serves 100% of Union Town, 100% of North Union, and 100% of South Union. They are the coverage. I am in support of keeping them on in the city. I would like to waive the fee. And the reason I would say waive the fee is because the amount that they were coming to the city per person, $5 per person was the first. They have come back, $3 a person. And I have seen talks in the county with other municipalities that have put this fee in place, much like a hydrant fee or a light fee. I want to make it clear, the way I'm voting tonight has no reflection or bearing on Fayette EMS, okay? How I'm voting tonight is because I don't agree with the charge. I'd like to table this, and so that we can go back and we can have some more discussion on this and see if there is something we can do. The $5, that's not going to happen. There is room to do some, and I think that the beginning work right here would be to help them out with that, the service that they bring. I think that, you know, the $500 a month that we have coming in a month could be better served for them if they were able to put that into their payroll. That's the reason for my motion that I'm going to bring on the floor. I'd like to table this motion and bring it back.
One second.
Just to add into that, a little bit more comment. Fayette EMS is located at our central station. They take one or two bays, Chief? One bay?
Two bays.
So this is where they run. And I've seen that one of the calls, they had over 900 calls one month for the City of Union Town. We go back to a time, and we have people that are in attendance in the audience and city employees, and some of us are old enough to remember when Union Town had an ambulance service, had an ambulance company. If we could have made moves to try to save them then, they may have not, they would have not gone away and fold. And I fear, and it is a serious fear, that if we don't step up as a city and do something, that that could possibly happen as well. And, you know, that, and I'd like to talk about that.
I also wanted to mention that we did cut their rent in half a few years ago. It used to be $1,000 per month when they came to us before, and it was my resolution to knock it in half at that time.
Just as a clarification item as well. So the motion is to appoint them as the service provider for 2024. So just to clarify, the effect of tabling the motion would not mean that you would not have service provided for ambulance services. They would continue just until such time as council takes any subsequent action.
Thank you, sir.
This is for a vote to table this motion. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to promote Jarrell Hanley to the position of Sergeant in the Union Town Police Department at a rate of $31.20 per hour effective December 18th. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to promote Zachary Vernell to the position of Corporal in the Union Town Police Department at a rate of $30.58 per hour effective December 18th, 2023. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
I'd like to congratulate both of those gentlemen and the chief. Thanks.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, that the Union Town Farmers' Market be under the direction of the Union Town Parks and Recreation Board, beginning with the 2024 season. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes, and I'd like to say, that's what we've talked about. They're ready to hit the ground running. And thank you for taking that job on, Greg. We appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to approve the purchase of hydraulic fluid and parts for snowplow from Napa in the amount of $707.38.
This is just, real quick, this is just regular, I wouldn't say wear and tear, just necessary items to keep our equipment running on the road. That fluid, it's mandatory, wash fluid, just simple things like that. We do need them. So this is just a simple purchase for keeping our equipment just on the road.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to approve the purchase of 56 bags of sidewalk salt from Best Line Equipment in the amount of $546. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to approve purchase of parts of snowplow from Stevenson Equipment in the amount of $2,861.17.
Tim, real quick, on this, you'll see the parts on this, for those blades we talked about, they ride the road all winter, all years. And there's nothing we can do about keeping them any longer than we already do. And there's nothing we can do about keeping them any longer than we already do. It's just a wear and tear item again. Unfortunately, they wear out pretty quick. So this is just, yet again, just one of the maintenance pieces we're gonna need for this upcoming winter season.
Cal, is this the exact number we need or is it a little bit extra? We have, is this a bill to get the supply?
Good question, John.
That's just to have two free trucking, that's roughly one spare, three ones, and that's even giving two, three for each per truck.
Thank you.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Terrence Price as part-time public works employee for up to 29 hours per week for a six-month probationary period, beginning December 11, 2023, at a salary of $1,350 per hour. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the quote from Green Ankers Contracting for installation of guide rail on the Jefferson Street Bridge at a cost of $13,000.
John, can you give a little bit more of a update on what this is for? Let everyone know what's going on?
All right. Realized it was talking to me, I wasn't sure what was gonna be there. Jefferson Street Bridge, the portion of the beams that are underneath the sidewalk for the denting of the walk is deteriorated to the point where they wanted to have it varicated off. And each year they update their requirements. Right now we have caddo gates secured to the sidewalk, varicating off, and they want something more permanent, I think, for vehicles to deter them. This company is the only company I'm able to get a quote from. I spoke to three companies and I called them four multiple times, no return. And I just don't know who else to get a quote from. I've talked to other contractors and they told me to call Green Acres or the U. And the U is the company I've called four times and my voicemail, no return.
And then this is one that if we don't do it soon...
Yeah, if we don't do it, the statesmen are coming and they're gonna do it, or do us, I would guarantee it's like twice.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize moving two veterans' affairs parking spots from the 911 parking lot to Beeson Avenue at the traffic light next to the county building at the corner of Beeson and Main Street.
Right before we go, the Fayette County Veterans Affairs Director, Brian Benson, had reached out to me last month and wanted to know that if they can get the two spots from the 911 law moved over, this was something that we did for, you know, our veterans. This actual location is, is even closer. And, and I think that it is appropriate. I reached out to Councilman Basaki first. He is a veteran and I, I thought that that is appropriate and imperative that, that he be the one. And, and Councilman Shuhon as well, being that they are leaving and they're going out, I, I thought that it would be great for them to be a part of something positive on their way out the door. Thank you, both of you, for, for the resolution and the second of this resolution. Thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize K-2 engineering to perform a traffic study to determine safe pedestrian walkway on West South Street behind the White Swan Building. Mr. Billy?
I, I would like to apologize to the folks at the White Swan. They came to us previously wanting this to happen and unless you're involved in the city, the city moves fast, even though what we govern and the things that we decide takes slow, a long time to happen. This is something that fell to the wayside and, and frankly, I'm embarrassed to, to say that, you know, that something that, that important of a study and we, we just let it kind of go to the side. I, I am in support of this, so.
Mr. Basaki?
It's definitely needed, you're right, it should have been done earlier, but we just go here forward, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, I have an elderly aunt that lives in that building and she frequency goes across the street to the Marathon Gas Station, the Sweet Peas Gas Station there for some of her necessities and a lot of the older citizens in that building also do the same thing. So we definitely need a pedestrian walkway there. Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mayor.
Okay, time for the monthly reports. I'm Director of Redevelopment Authority, Ms. Simmons.
Good evening. I laid the report there for you. Just a recap of the CDBG program. We had our CDBG work group November 9th. The next meeting is tentatively scheduled for December 14th. And in that meeting, we will have Jared, the mayor, myself and Kim. And in 2024, recurring meetings will be set with either new attendees or the same, or it'll just be organized just kind of the same as we organize the boards. We do that with all of, or I do that with my work groups. So we look forward to the new work groups to talk about the CDBG program and what other applications we can submit. The 2023 application I reported last month, it's been submitted, it's under review, but we will discuss tonight the 2024 CDBG application. This year, I would like Uniontown to submit two applications to the CDBG program. In February, we could hope that we'll be prepared to submit a competitive application for a million dollars with the 18% administration fees, which would be 100,000 to assist in management and oversight of a project at size and federal requirements. Two priority projects that's been identified is the replacement of Pershing Court and cured in pla, cured in place pipe for Fayette to Penn Street. Both of those projects are under review. We're gonna schedule a public hearing where everyone can come together and learn about the projects and be prepared for the application at the end of January. The Quick Glance spreadsheet is in your packets and the comments to the right gives updates on the projects. All projects remain the same, but I will update council on Lemon Street Playground. The project has been underway. The walking path is complete. They have the picnic tables up. There's a few other things that needs to happen there, but they've submitted two payment requests so far and that project's coming to a close. So our second portion, the pavilion, will be bid and hopefully there'll be completion in March. So then that wraps Lemon Street up. Besides the next phases in which we plan to demolish 82 and 80 Lemon and move forward with that green space and the planning process and work group meetings for the project that we'd like to have there in that space.
I'm here to buy this joint work and they're, they're out there working really hard and they're doing a great job. So thank you very much, Ed. That Lemon Street Park has come a long way and I'm really excited to see what's gonna happen in future episodes. Congratulations and thank you on that because it does look fantastic.
Awesome. We hope to have a little event there, just like an opening, a ribbon cutting or something through the park. And we hope that all council can come. The other demolitions on the CDBG funds, the environmental reviews are complete with the seed. We could have hoped that those would be through federal requirements would move quicker, but we all know that sometimes federal requirements don't move that quick. So we have, hopefully, we can get the demolition as, as soon as the weather breaks and we can bring down 80, 82, 55 Lennox, 84 Murray, 39 Winona. We have some expiring funds, which we've already discussed, modification hearings coming up. We will be advertising at least four modification hearings to include additional funds for Calvary United Methodist Playgroup Playground, Grant Street ADA Restrooms and Pavilion, State Theater External Rehabilitation and One Voice One Community Tutoring Program. Each of those four projects would be receiving some type of allocation through the CDBG program. Our engineering services that we've selected is going well. We've had our sewage and transportation work group meeting. In that work group meeting, we met about four times and now we've developed the CDBG application that we'll submit hopefully at the end of January. Those projects, of course, still need to be vetted out for eligibility and we could hope that they're all ready to go. We will start having further discussions in March, so we'll schedule, again, and organize a new work group, recurring meetings in March for sewage and transportation. Home Investment Partnership Program was submitted. We have heard back. Just to touch back on that, we, we hope that we receive that grant and DCD did follow up and it seems promising that we would have existing owner occupied housing rehab available to the City of Uniontown, hopefully $700,000 for housing. If you are interested in housing rehabilitation, you can go online to the Facebook page for the Redevelopment Authority and click the link to be added to a waitlist. It's such a preliminary waitlist. We have that program as well as a new program. We just entered into a memorandum of understanding with USDA to coordinate grant loan applications for very low income people in Uniontown. This would be $10,000 in grant for over the age of 62 and possible loans up to $50,000, 20-year terms, 1% interest rate. And we are now the packagers and can assist the, anyone interested. So any housing rehab, just get on the waitlist and we will reach out to those that we feel would fit whichever program that we have available. The FAIR application was submitted. It was submitted for the Winona Street Homes for blight removal. We could hope that that's our first phase of developing some type of housing or project there at Winona. And like always, we will have public meetings and we will discuss that at length. Any questions regarding Winona development, reach out to the Redevelopment Authority. Our properties are moving along with a few sales. We have plenty of other properties too. If you're interested in purchasing property from the Redevelopment Authority or any questions about the Redevelopment Authority's property, please reach out. The Story Square Maintenance Agreement between the city and the Redevelopment Authority, we could hope that in March we'll have an agreement to review, which just outlines a lot of the things we know already, but puts it into an agreement so we know whose responsibility is whose. And I do know that there's an insurance claim on the Story Square. I've received a few phone calls about that. So the city and the Redevelopment Authority is aware and are looking into the options of replacing the awning at Story Square. Downtown Uniontown Business District, the mayor touched on it sooner. This was my first year at the Christmas in the square. It was really great to see all the members of the board and businesses come together. I was, I was happy to organize the, the district's requirements, but the, the, the real heroes are all those who came out in the cold and decorated and organized things. DeMarcos, I want to make sure everyone is aware that a great thing he did there with his tent and it brought in a new type of audience. And we also, Joey Newbauer with running around and taking care of things at Newbauer Flowers and, and of course Lauren Yeoman and Nicole and the rest of the board, Christina Gassini, Jess Lastnick, Dylan Sullivan for guiding traffic. So that was great and we hope to kick off some more projects under the district, which one of those is the local share account, which we hope to maybe possibly modify that funding for planning purposes. And wrapping it up, the city and the Redevelopment Authority are in discussions for an economic development cooperation agreement, which is really exciting. In that agreement, it allows the Redevelopment Authority to assist the city with different planning initiatives and grant applications for planning and community development. One of those is the Municipal Assistance Planning Grant. I just wanted to update council. Thank you, Kim, for your help with that. We got the payment request submitted, the letter was submitted. Thank you, council and Planning Commission. So that should be tidied up and you should be receiving the $35,000 or so reimbursement for the money that you've put into the comprehensive plan so far. And now we're moving on to the next stages of finishing up the addendum that's needed for a lot of the mapping and different data that needs to be added into that plan. And we will continue the pursuit for funds to wrap up the comprehensive plan and hopefully look at an emphasis on the business, housing and recreation. I'm excited, the Recreation Board, I would love to attend a meeting and talk about the next steps there with the City Master Plan and how it can work hand in hand with the comprehensive plan. The rental registration program and compliance management is part of the economic cooperation agreement and that is also something very exciting that we can kick off in the springtime. We look forward to ironing that out and for consideration for budget allocations to assist the salaries of the time involved in pursuing these grants and working through these things. The Blight Remediation Plan, again, is a project kicking off in March, so March is gonna be a busy, busy time. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you, Crystal.
Fire Department report, Chief Cohen.
First off, Steve, Joe, it's been a pleasure. Thank you. Thank you for everything. Was a good servant with, with both of you, so. Jay and Zach, I don't know if they're still here or not, but I'd like to extend congratulations to them too on their promotion too, so. Just a real quick report as far as what's going on with the Fire Department. Always start with our incidents. So for the month of November 2023, we had seven fire-related incidents. These included one building fire, one kitchen fire contained to the stove top, two trash fires, two smoke scares, but no active fire resulted. One scorch burned, but with no exist, with no ignition. Again, a few close calls, but fortunately we kind of dodged a proverbial bullet on that one. 21 rescue-related incidents, 19 being motor vehicle accidents. Four of those had injuries. We had one removal of an ill or injured person from a building and one vehicle versus pedestrian accident. We had 10 hazardous condition incidents and these included one gas leak, one overheated motor, two carbon monoxide incidents, four power lines down and one arcing or short-circuited piece of equipment. But it's seven service-related incidents. These included five lockouts or gaining access, again, mostly for the EMS crews, one assist the city police detail and one general public service incident. We had 25 fire alarm activations. That's usually about double what we're getting on fire alarms, so. So it was a pretty busy month as far as running fire alarms. And we had four details where we witnessed fire drills in a public facility and as we always say, that included facility staff training and building familiarization for our folks. Run down on our training conducted or taken by our personnel for the month. We had pretty good numbers again this month, over 100 man-hours of training taken or conducted for the month of November. Just one thing as far as apparatus and equipment updates. We had said about the NFPA ladder testing, everything went well and fortunately everything passed. Just a couple of miscellaneous items. Personnel assisted and participated in a number of the holiday events over the past month. Speaking of Christmas, just another reminder of the Toys for Tots Drive. Donations can be dropped off at Central Fire Station, 84 North Beeson Avenue. And as well, I reported last month that our department again will be participating in the Christmas Eve Day Boot Drive that benefits Salvation Army. And Reverend, probably the shortest one I think I've ever had, I probably should just let you read that. one I think I've ever had. I probably should just let you read that. He and I have a running joke going. So, but yeah, we've been busy, though, but nothing major to report, but I got to get it in. Last but not least, Thursday night, everyone knows what it is. Better get over there and get your specials. So, any questions, anything?
I just wanted to add, too, thank you for all your help with Christmas in the Square.
Sure, absolutely. Yep. Hey, not a problem. We're glad to help. So, all right, folks, thanks for everything. All right. Talk to you later.
Thanks, chief.
Congratulations.
Police Department, Chief DeWitt.
Mayor, council, everyone's here. Thank you. Thank you for the votes, for the promotions. The department will, that makes it nice for us for continuity through leadership, and we have a good direction throughout the department, so I appreciate that. So, to be brief, during the month of November, the Union Town Police Department responded to 752 calls for service. Breakdown of some of those calls included eighteen vehicle accidents, nine assaults, two robberies, two frauds, twenty-three welfare checks, thirty-nine domestics, one assist fire, twelve disorderly conducts, fifty-two traffic complaints, twenty-three emergency medical assists, fifteen assist other police departments, seventeen harassments, two shots fired calls, twenty-eight alarms, twenty-nine thefts, three public intoxications, seventeen animal complaints, fifty suspicious persons, activities, or vehicles, five overdoses, one where Narcan was administered to reverse the effects of an overdose. Officers made a total of forty-three criminal arrests, issued twenty-three non-traffic citations, and 117 traffic citations. That 117 traffic citations, that's a product of the grant that we received, and officers having technology, and the cars being able to run tags as they're following it rather than waiting for nine-one. So positive number to see there, and our crashes are starting to drop, too, as a result of that. So positive, positive moves. We conducted vehicle foot patrols in city parks as well as Sheepskin Trail. We also started heavily patrolling the parking garages once Dez and other clerks got us the cards for the parking garage, so we started patrolling those a lot heavier, and started to push the problems out of the parking garages that we're dealing with regularly now. During the month of November, code enforcement closed twenty-seven cases, opened twenty-two new cases, and carrying over approximately thirty cases. That little section there is just Officer Camper. That doesn't include Sergeant Brown, or Wayne Brown. It's going to be hard to not call him sergeant. He was my sergeant forever here. That doesn't include Wayne Brown's numbers yet. So that's all I have. Mayor, council, any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you, chief.
For everything.
Public works. Mr. Potulinski.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd just like to say thanks to Joe and Steve for their service here, and I know they're always easy to work with and made the job a pleasure. I know from my departments, you guys would both be great to miss here on the city council. Thank you. As far as the sewage, since the last meeting, we had our new employee start. He's been doing well, and I think he'll be a good fit, so hopefully he sticks with us. He's a great help, especially now towards the end of the year where people have time to use, and everybody's taking their vacation now. But everybody knows that if it does snow, they do have to come in, so we will have enough to operate, to do snow removal if need be. We have all the trucks set up, and we're ready to go here. It's all geared up. Not looking towards any breakdown, but you never know with the trucks. They are aging, and we do our best to keep them together and maintenance them and take care of them to keep them on the road. In the Sewage Department, the compost site's been full swing. It is leaf season, so we've been doing our best to keep up with the collections and keep the processing through our compost site there to keep the site clean and ready for more material as it comes in. Other than that, that's all I really have.
Thanks, John. It's been an honor. I appreciate it very much. My department take care of this guy, or Joe?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilman Chuon, do you have something that you want to talk about?
Yeah, thank you, mayor.
Yes, sir.
First of all, it was a very good learning experience for me these past eight years. Learned a lot. I did have some prerequisites coming in, having thirty years of retail experience as a manager, dealing with budgets and plans. So I have a few people here I want to thank. I'm sorry if I skip anybody. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Ed Feick, our former mayor, and naturally, our current and re-elected mayor, Bill Gurkey, for your help and direction and support also. I enjoyed going to these ribbon-cutting ceremonies and meetings that we went together. It was a pleasure, and I liked how we supported each other in those events. Former city councilmen Martin Gaddy and Joby Palumbo, and the late, great Blair Jones. It was a pleasure working with them, along with our current city councilman, Steve Usaki, Jared Billy, and the most reverend Vince Winfrey. It was a pleasure, and working with all of you also, and thank you for your support. We worked really well together. We might have had some differences, but we all wanted the same result for our citizens and for our city. Our city office personnel, Kim Marshall, Shannon Wood, Bernie Coffin, Desiree Walcos. Those two ladies helped me with the safety meetings and our safety committee when I had that area my first term. Bree Knox, who's no longer with us, and my daughter Katie Chuon. Those people are really the glue that keeps this city together. If you don't believe me, you can ask the mayor himself. So thank you for your help and support. Our city solicitor, Tim Witt, who is very experienced, helpful, and knowledgeable. Thank you for your direction and assistance in helping us research some of these resolutions, and answering questions, and defining questions and everything that we need to do for our citizens here. Thank you, Tim. Our former fire chief, Buck Griffith, and our current fire chief, Scott Kahn, along with our firefighters, both past and present. Again, my first term, I was with Buck Griffith with our, was our fire chief. Here again, it was a great learning experience having that area. Buck, I thank you very much for your tutelage in that area with firefighting and the like, and also for the Fire Department for keeping our, and Scott Kahn for keeping our city and citizens safe. Also, our former police chief and magistrate, Jason Cox, who was here during my first term and part of this term, along with our current police chief, DJ DeWitt, and our past and present city policemen. Again, I thank you for your work and support in keeping the citizens in our city safe. Our former Streets Department Director, Phil Mahoney, was here my first term, along with our current Streets Department Director, John Potulinski, and their crews, their respective crews. Thank you as well for your support, keeping our streets together, snow removed, and the like. So thank you, guys. Our city Sewage Department personnel, Elaine Otterstrom, Denise Salavich, and Deb Brown, who was just hired. I also like to thank them for their support and help through these past eight years. Our city Treasurers Office personnel, our former city treasurer, Joe Jaketti, Doreen Mahoney, and Crystal Lewis. I'd like to thank them also for their help and support. Our former code enforcement officer, Matt Thomas, along with our current code enforcement officers, Fred Camper and Wayne Brown. Again, I'd like to thank them for their job they're doing, and they continue taking care of issues, and naturally, as the chief reported, new issues pop up every day. So, and I believe there was twenty-two new ones since our last meeting. So thank you to those gentlemen for their enforcement for our codes. Our maintenance department do-it-all persons, Ed King and Nathan King. I thank you for your help throughout these eight years. Things pop up that our Streets Department can't take care of, so that's where Ed King comes in, along with Nathan King. Our controllers, our current controller, John McCune, thank you for your support. Our previous controllers, Nick Vasides and the late Jim Cilio. I thank you guys for your support and in working with you these past eight years. Greg Crossley, who is our emergency management coordinator, he was a great help when, during my first term, actually, we had a tornado that went through the city, if you remember, and he was a great help with that, getting everything together and taking care of the public and the housing for the public that was in, that had to deal with that hurricane, tornado, I'm sorry. Our environmental services personnel, Mary Rockwell, that takes care of this building and also the police station. She does a very good job. As you can see, the bathrooms are always clean. These rooms, offices are always clean, and she also attends our safety meetings, and she's on our safety committee. So thank you, Mary Rockwell. Also, I'd like to thank Joe Walcos and his crew for taking care of our city parks and our city property. I'd like to also thank Domena Jones, Amy Yazari, Tiffany Blahoe, and Rhea Gladman for helping me this past years, the past two years with our Parks and Recreation Area. Our city Public Relations Coordinator, Laura Cutec. That job doesn't exist anymore, but she was a big help when she was here, along with our city's Planning and Development Coordinator, Mookie John. Our city's Redevelopment Authority personnel, our former director, Mark Rayphil, and now our current director, Crystal Simmons, and I'd like to thank them and their respective teams and board members to keep our city going and redeveloping. Thank you, Crystal. Our city's engineering company, K2 Engineering, like to thank them. Our city's consultants for our city's comprehensive plan, Gibson, Thomas, and their team. Our city's employee safety and workers compensation insurance companies, that would be Mark Feick with Sprouls Agency, and Rob Eli with Incova. They take care of our safety committee training, safety training for all the employees that are employed with the city. I would also like to thank Steve Petruska from the library, who also is on our safety committee meeting, safety committee. Excuse me. I'm almost finished. Our county commissioners, Vince Vasides, Scott Dunn, and Dave Lor, who were all very instrumental for the construction of our new Fayette County Jail. Right, chief? And also supporting us, the mayor and the council, with our city here in Union Town. I'd like to thank Brian Morozak with WMBS. Thank you, Brian. It's wonderful having you here, taking care of our meetings and getting them on the air. My immediate supervisors at Supervalue and United Natural Foods, Mike Cosaglow, Carlton McKenzie, and Greg Buell. They were very instrumental with me changing my schedule so I can be here at these meetings. In my first term, we had them on Tuesdays. Then they were switched to Thursdays, and naturally, they switched my schedule for me so I could attend these meetings. So I want to thank Supervalue and United Natural Foods and those gentlemen for working with me through this. My wonderful wife Cheryl, my children Stephanie, Katie, and Joe III, who supported me all through these eight years. All of my wonderful friends that gave me their support and votes, and not only that, but especially friends that I have at the Union Town Elks 370 and the Polish Club here in Union Town, where they watch these meetings, and I have their support. That's all I'm going to say about that. So I wanted to thank them, along with my other friends I have. Last but not least, all of you, the citizens of this great city. Thank you again for attending our meetings, and thank you for your support, and I try to do the best for you and for our city these past eight years. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Absolutely, Steve. You're right ahead.
Okay, so I don't have anything written down. Sorry. I am not good at this. I came and made it through a Hallmark movie. I'm getting emotional, and I hate Hallmark movies, so that just shows you. But when you do this, you become friends and family as well, you know? So it's your fault. You started. But came in throwing gloves and came in swinging in the beginning, you know? And then you look up, and you're at your wedding, and you see these people, and it just, it changes everything. It's not just a job. It's not just a duty or a service. It's family. It's really inexperienced. Until you actually do it, it's hard to even imagine. So I want to thank everybody I've been involved with, and I'm going to get in real big trouble for this, but the only reason I was able to make it through all this is because my new wife, Rachel, thank you for supporting me and stopping me from pulling all of my hair out this part of it. But honestly, it's been an honor, a pleasure, and I hope I've served everyone well, done my best I could, and good luck taking one who's coming in. Thanks.
Thank you again, Councilman Usaki.
Thank you.
Councilman Chuon for your service to the city. Time for public comment. I guess everyone knows the rules on the doors. Three minutes. Keep coming. Keep your comments short and concise, and we'll hear everyone that needs to talk. Does anyone have any public comment? Yes, ma'am. Take the podium, state your name and your address, please.
I'm like you, I'm a public speaker at all. My name is Tonja Kozcheck. Thank you for having me. I'm here to talk about where I live, here in Union Town. I love Union Town. I'm thankful for the city. But there's a lot of issues at the house that I live in. There's drug problems. I know there's a lot of problems here in Union Town with drugs, but it's in my front yard. It's not in my backyard. It's in my front yard. I'm the only house on my street. I've asked the former mayor to come out and look where I live, see what I've done with it, so he can see that I am trying to clean it up. I am not here to make a mess. I have trash every day in my yard. I have needles where people like to stick in their arms. There's kids around me. I have a niece that lives there. It's like every day you walk outside in this glass, there's somebody selling drugs, somebody shooting up. I have walked out personally, three, four o'clock in the morning, to these vehicles. I've asked them to please leave and not do the drugs here. This is an alley that everybody keeps telling me that is a right-of-way. But if you would look where I live, it is a dead end. I don't understand why we cannot get that stopped. When the former mayor was here, I was here. I have pleaded with them, and they said they was going to come out and talk to me. I have pleaded with them and they said they was gonna come out and talk to me, but we have done that. I'm still trying to get this taken care of. There is two alleyways, so they call them, that are driveways basically, on South Mount Vernon Avenue, at these two houses. Mine is in an alley that is south of, it's rear railroad street, I'm the only house there. They actually stopped taking trash, they used to have trash down in the alley, they stopped taking the trash, so there's no more trucks locked down in the alley that was from the former mayor, he did stop that because there was a cesspool that runs into my basement. Now, there is trucks coming back through there, a lot of trash people, but they're dumping dumpsters and things back there. So, these big, heavy trucks are coming back through there and making a cesspool once again. The only reason why this is even there, as far as I am concerned, is so people can come and do their drug deals, their cash on, and it's a place where they can run back and forth. I have contacted the police several times, I understand they're busy. When I called them, they're like, we'll get there. I have not seen them there yet and I've asked, time and time again, can you please just come and check this out? I understand it's one person, but I don't want needles in my yard, I don't want drug addicts in my yard. And I do have pictures to show you, but I literally have trash in my front yard. If this was in your front yard, you wouldn't want this. There's diapers, there's TVs, there's everything you can imagine that people just throw out there and it's just an alley to them, but it's my house, it's where I live. Let's also show you the cesspool that was there. This is how bad it was at one time. We literally had this, the city come down and they put gravel in. If the trucks can continue to go through there, they're gonna continue putting that right back where it was at, it's just gravel, that goes into my basement. Like I said, I'm the only house there. I am working with Frederick, your person here, your code enforcer. I have talked to him and he's going to meet with me Monday to see what I'm talking about for sure. I've also been upstairs to talk to Crystal and she did put this out for me.
What was your address again?
66 Railroad Street Rear. And believe it or not, I saw it on the map, really. She had a hard time finding it today when we went through everything, I had really tried. I also got this, where the land that I'm talking about that has these extra little portholes, what do you call them, they call them alleys, that there's nobody who says that they own those. The lidman maintains them. I have pictures that I'm more than happy to share with you, drug addicts making their deals right in front of my house. I mean, this is every day, this isn't just like, oh, it's just here, it's every day in front of my house. Hang on here, real quick. I mean, this is every day. This is off my cameras, and I tell them all the time, I have cameras, like I can show the police your faces. Yeah, yeah, whatever. Listen, please stop. But I am literally the only house, I don't have a parking spot. If you go down to Railroad Street in front of me, it's a dead end. It used to be a street that went up, they closed it off, it's a dead end. Those people park in the city area parking. I have no parking in my place, except for right in front of my house. And I can't park there because people say it's not your parking spot, it's an alley. I keep trying to tell them, the only reason why you're coming through this alley is to do your drugs, and I'm tired of dealing with that. But they don't seem to understand that. Like I said, I have tons of pictures I can show you, that these are not gonna go away. I have been here several times to talk to the former mayor, I had some health issues, so I had to take a break, I'm back, my heart's good again, I'm ready to fight, but I don't want to keep fighting by myself. I need help with this. I talked to a young lady that was in this office before, I want to say Phoebe, I'm not sure if that was her name, but I have emails after emails after emails about this issue with her, that we went back and forth with. I understand that you were not the mayor at the time, but this is continuing. I have a letter from a homeowner who just bought the house at 139 South Mount Vernon Avenue. Her, when you look at mine, her driveway is at my house. Her and I are the only two that need to park there. Everybody else has their own access, they have their own parking up on South Mount Vernon Avenue, they don't need to park there. But they say they have to park there so they could do business. But this is a letter I wanted to give to you so you can read, this is from the neighbor there who owns the house right next to mine. Like I said, I have tons of pictures, anytime you want to see them. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Isn't your home near your road or are you walking the trail?
My home is one up from that, yes, sir.
So, what you're talking about impacts the walking trails?
No, sir.
Are people on it?
No, sir. So, the walking trail is here, that's, that is Railroad Street. Mine is the alley right behind that. That there, I am the only little house, and it's like a 25 by 25 little house there. There's a concrete slab there, I also have a picture of that, it is actually not able to park car on, because I have a picture where it shows that was actually part of the house at one time. So, the concrete slab that they have there, you can't park on because it's not deep enough, it's not made for that. They just took the outside of this little house off and left this spot here. So, I don't have a parking spot, only in front of my house. And everybody, like I said, that wants the traffic through there likes to tell me to move, I don't have a parking room for them to get through. My problem is, where are you gonna park at and why are you coming through here just to do your business? They go to the inn, do their business, come back down through. There's nothing there. My house is the only one that's there, I mean, the only one that should be able to say, hey, can we do something here? Like I said, all the houses up above, that's Mount Vernon Avenue, they have all access up there. The houses down below, they're all parked down below, that's Railroad Street, I'm rear, I'm the only one there. I've also went to 911 to try to get a name tag, so we have a street name, they said you gotta talk to the mayor, I talked to the mayor, former mayor, he said talk to 911. I talked to 911, I'm like, listen, we gotta figure this out because all my packages goes to South, goes to Railroad Street, because theirs is 66 Railroad Street, mine 66 Rear Railroad Street. But I'm the only house, like, I get, you know, that's like, but if we can do, get this blocked off somehow, because like I said, the way things seems is this road, and they don't take my garbage there, mayor did have that stopped, all their trash is back up on the street, like I told him, he wouldn't want them to come down there with worse, and said, no, absolutely not. So, it's back up on South Mount Vernon Avenue, so there's nobody coming in that alley for any other reason. There's no fire hydrants, or if there was a fire, this is what I got told by one of the neighbors, if there was a fire, if there was a fire, they would use the one where there is a fire hydrant. I have no fire hydrants, there's nothing around me. It is just seriously a little path there.
Could I, after the meeting, stop and see you, okay? I need a little information from you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have.
Mayor, I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
And further than me, just from now on, I'll, uh, what is with the staffs for Parks and Recreation, will they be able to report?
We're gonna look into that, yes. I'll have to discuss that, but good comment, Reverend, okay? We'll look into that, thank you.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Uniontown, the Council hereby adjourns to meet December 18th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Mr. Billy, Mr. Vasaki.
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Shuhan.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes, thank you all for attending.